Let's start with introductions. I'm Nancy Pejewie, I am the Chair of the WRUD Board.
That's Sullivan Royleton.
Jamie Daniel, Vice Chair for Bethel.
I'm Gail LaFlamme, I'm the Middle School Principal, White River Valley Middle School.
Jeff Thomas, High School Principal.
Dave DuMaye from Royleton.
Peggy Ainsworth, Royleton.
Andrew Bowen, Elementary Principal, Bethel resident, mom of two Wildcats.
Jamie Canarney, Superintendent Schools.
And Calvin, our tech guy. And I didn't get your name, Orca Guy.
That's Greg.
(laughing).
Orca!
And you are?
I'm number 11, Royleton.
Okay.
Eunice Gavin, Royleton.
David Whitney, Royleton.
Greg Hughes, Bethel.
Great, and do we have anybody on Zoom? It does not look like it. Okay, I'm gonna just jump right in then on our presentation. Please feel free, if there's a slide that you would like more information on, don't hesitate to, you know, just interrupt me, otherwise I'm gonna go through these pretty quickly, but you know, whenever you have a question, just, you know, jump right in. So... What am I supposed to be pointing at?
Is it green furon?
Oh, no. Okay. There, now it's green furon, and do I point there or here?
I would point at the computer.
Okay. Ah, there we go. Okay, so, to start us off, the entire project that we're planning on doing is $6.8 million, but the bond is for $3.8 million. The rest of the money, some of it has been fundraised already, including, we have over $500,000 that's been donated, but if the bond doesn't pass, we need to give back the money that's been donated, which would be an awful shame to give away over half a million dollars, to give up half a million dollars. The average annual cost for the house that is a $200,000 home, which is the average in our district, would be less than $50 a year. So, we're figuring this is not gonna break the bank, and for people that qualify for homestead, it would be even less. So, let's get into what it is we're looking at. Okay, first of all, why do we need this? Enrollment is up, and for every-
How many students?
Right now, we are-
Eighteen.
Yeah. We were at 208 in 2003, when the high school was at its max, and now we are 10% higher, so put in another 21 kids, so we're up to over 230 kids. And, so, a big part of it is the safety. We want to improve the safety entrances to both this school and to the middle school, because right now, we don't have secure entrances. We're gonna go on a little tour in a bit, and you'll see those entrances here anyways, and see why it is we want to change that. And, we just care about our schools. We wanna get this school maintained as best it can be, and that's something that is a great investment for the future. And I know there are some people concerned that the state is planning all kinds of crazy things. The governor's proposal was to make five school districts out of the entire state with 4,000 students per district, which, it's not gonna happen. I mean, that's an impossibility in our area. Chittenden County, yeah, they can get 4,000 students, no problem. It's not gonna happen here. So, the senate is now working on a bill that the House came up with, that changed it to 11 districts, which brings that number per district way down from what the governor originally wanted, and we feel like we're in a position to be one of those schools that is attracting people, 'cause right now, we have 80 tuition students that choose to come here, and they're coming from 22 different districts. We're a big draw. We've got the athletics, we've got the academics, we've got the arts, and people wanna send their kids here, and we don't see that changing. So, it's definitely an investment. Every one of those 80 kids brings $20,000 tuition money, which, 1.6 million dollars this year. In our budget, we budgeted for tuition kids, and we were conservative this past year. We budgeted for 45, and we ended up with 80. It's, that's a lot of money coming in. And so, the 45 that we budgeted for, that made everybody's taxes go down, because that was part of our revenue, instead of all being tax money, we included that, those 45 students, but and then, in reality, we got 35 more than that. So again, 1.6 million last year, and you figure, a lot of these kids have siblings, younger siblings, that are also gonna be tuitioning here. We've got every reason to believe that this is not going to change, that, that we're going to continue to attract these students. So, the secure entrances. You said you were from Royleton, all three of you, right? Greg's from Bethel. I know that the very first time I came to this school to attend a performance, and I parked in the parking lot, that I always get mixed up here, because this place is a maze, but the big parking lot. I parked over there, and then I couldn't figure out, where do I even go in? I knew that the performance was in the small gym, and I couldn't even figure out how to get into this building, because the entrance way is just those two green doors, double doors, and they did not look friendly at all. It did not look like this is where I should be going into this building. So I walked all the way around the building to the front entrance, and realized, that's not where people are going in either, and it's just not a very welcoming entrance. And so, the new entrance would change that considerably. The other problem with the entrance as it is now, in the morning, when kids arrive, they're propping the door open so that their friends can get in. So there's nobody monitoring that door. Anybody could come in. So we want to make secure entrances. The other entrance there is the middle school entrance, and it's beautiful with the nice mosaics that have been there as long as I know, and they're wonderful, but it's not a secure entrance. And so this would be the new entrance to the high school. It would have a lobby, so that when people arrived to go to a concert or a play, there'd actually be a place that you could fit, instead of people having to form a line outside, because there's not enough room in that, in the current lobby for people to gather there, and it just would be a much more welcoming place. And, that gets into the technical stuff, which, anything you wanna question on that? So that shows the new lobby would be much larger than the current one, and again, it would just be a more welcoming place. Another part of this expansion is the shop. Right now, there's only room for about eight kids at a time to be having projects down there, and it's very popular. There's a lot of kids that want to take maybe one shop class or two shop classes. They don't want to go to a technical center and give up the time that they have at the high school. Instead, they just wanna be able to take, you know, one class, you know, small engine repair or a wood shop, and there's not enough room. And so, there would be 1,000 square feet of an addition, and one of the good things about that addition would be, it would be built in such a way that if there was a flood, it's going to help protect the rest of the building, and the machinery that's in there is going to be able to be elevated, so if water comes in, the machinery will be safe.
How will that-
Greg, how will that work? I was in the building when it flooded, so-
Yeah. Anybody here know better than me as to how that would work?
Well, and our EEI's not here tonight, but architects, definitely, that's what they were working on.
Yeah, they were building that in.
They left the floor.
The floor-
No, not the floor.
Equipment.
The equipment.
The equipment can be elevated. Yeah, it's gonna be built in such a way that any equipment in there is going to be easily elevated, so that it will be protected. Hi, Julie. This is Julie Hinman, she's also on the board from Bethel. So, that shop expansion would be great. The new expansion would have enough room, so they could actually drive a car in, and kids could work on a car. That's not possible right now. Any other questions on that?
I just think it would be a lot better to put it up in the parking lot somewhere and have the shop separate from the school, and it's kind of a dangerous spot down there, is it not? Where people are working on cars and they catch on fire?
I don't know. I haven't heard that, that's not something that anybody's brought up, so that's an interesting point.
Is it noisy? Planers?
No, I mean, no, we haven't had any concerns, Jeff.
No, the only concerns we've had so far is with people outside working on small engines or cars, because that noise seems to travel, because it's outside in the, the science lab is right above, or gas spills and stuff. So having this enclosed was a nice option for our science lab not to hear all that noise and smell the gas, per se.
And it being enclosed allows for fire suppression if the fire's an issue.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, the other part, my granddaughter's doing wood shop in there, and when I went through on the tour and saw how crowded it was, and you were walking over things to get where you needed to go, it really, it's too crowded to be safe.
No, I believe in it.
Yeah.
Sure, believe me.
Yeah, I'm sure you do.
The performing arts wing seems to be the most controversial part that I've seen anyways, as far as Facebook. It's not a theater. It's been put out there on Facebook and on Front Page Forum that we're trying to build a theater. No. It's a practice space, and you can see in that picture how crowded the, the practice room is right now. That's not safe. The decibel level is not safe. When the band teacher has to wear earplugs, because the noise level is damaging, you know that it's, it's not working well. And, so, part of this would be to build a better practice space, incorporate it in those doors, the new entrance way, it would all be seamless, it would make it much more accessible, so kids who want to be part of the performing arts would be able to actually get up on the stage. Right now, we don't have a way of that for people that are wheelchair-bound. And so that's what that whole wing would look like, and that's, you know, a big part of the money. And we're gonna show a video in a, in a couple minutes of, that goes into this more. Yes?
Worth mentioning that over one-third of this is fundraising.
Yeah. The Booster Club, for as long as I've been involved in this district, the Booster Club has been raising money for this. They've really worked hard on this, and like I say, they have that $500,000 grant that they'll have to give back if it doesn't happen, which, to lose a half a million dollars, ugh.
I think part, part of the thing to think of is, basically, we're gonna build the shell for that, build the rooms, but a lot of the stuff that they wanna do for better sound, sound projection, or sound quieting down, whatever word you wanna use, that that's part of what the fundraising is for.
And-
We, we do the shell, the Booster Club does the rest.
And so, this is a street view of what this'll look like. So it'll basically match the other side of the school where the new gym entrance was built on, so it's gonna just be a really nice street view of the school. So here are some of the upgrades that are going to happen with the fundraising. And have you attended concerts here or plays? Sometimes I feel so badly for those students in the plays especially, even though they're mic'd, sometimes the sound is just bouncing off of those gym walls, and it would be great to have some acoustical tile and to, to make it clearer. Okay, here's our video. I think you have to do that one. Now, if I'm correct, this was produced by students, this video?
Then I came back to Vermont, the local high schools, none of them had bands. I decided that we had to have bands, so I did. I started bands in four of the towns in this area. South Royleton first, and then Randolph, and Bethel, and Rochester.
It started with Dick Ellis as a proponent of music. He taught in all of the schools in the district probably at that time, and he led the town band, and I saw at that time, even before my children were in school, that here was a community that embraced music.
One, two, three, ready, and...
To have like such a supportive music program has like helped a lot of people like gain access to be able to do what they wanna do.
I play the trombone, I'm in concert band, jazz band.
Chorus band.
Jazz band.
Normal band, and theater.
Music has always been a big part of my life, and I've been in band and chorus for as long as it's been available.
I've been going to concerts at South Royleton since probably 1979, 80, something like that, but as an audience member, it is really hard to keep things under control, because there is so much noise reverberating in the room. If our students can have a space that has good acoustics and can understand for themselves what they are producing, that makes a better musician.
When I go down to like the band room, like, and I see like, like the band class, and I see how many kids there are in there, it's so, like, it's so like confined, that, but there's so many kids that wanna join band.
Our music program is growing, and we just need a larger rehearsal space for these students. It's, it's pretty chaotic, to be honest. So probably about 10% of class is spent just setting up and breaking down. If, if the setup was there already, students didn't have to do that, that could be a lot more time that students could be accessing their education.
We spend all these months like playing this music in the basement room, and the acoustics in there, it's like too much to be playing, not to mention the fact that we have like damaging amounts of sound hitting our ears when we're trying to rehearse down there.
There is very little room to walk around, it's a hazard if there's an emergency. Anybody can walk into the band rehearsal on any day that band is rehearsing and see that it is at max capacity.
Well, the Performing Arts Center would be such a great addition, especially to our music department in general, just, I mean, what we have to do now is, in order to get to a concert, we have to lug all of our instruments, all the percussion, everything up the stairs into the small gym, which is basically on the other side of the school than the current band room we're in.
I don't think students feel like it's a space where they're being celebrated. I think it's a space that we are making do, but I don't think they are walking out and getting the musical experience that they deserve.
25% of our students are involved with the music program here at White River Valley High School. You know, when they built the new gym years ago, there was a lot of pride in our school in athletics, and you know, the gym came, and like, saying is, if you build it, they will come, and I think it's true. When we talk about pride in our school, you know, pride is a sense of belonging, and I think it's important that everyone has that sense of belonging in our school. Providing the Performing Arts Center will be a chance for a lot of our students to have that sense of belonging and more pride in our school.
There's a, a good buzz with the, the new Wildcat. It's a combination of two schools coming together, has won, and out of the gate, the, you know, academics has been a very large focus of that. We've most recently seen athletics be a big focus, and now, and now the piece that we're looking at this point to complete that package is the, the performing arts piece of it.
The kids with school choice, they, they get to look around, they get to see which schools they wanna come to. With a performing arts center, we're gonna, our school's gonna look a lot nicer, first of all, and already, the music department and the theater department's such a massive draw.
You know, we kicked around some numbers, if we just had eight to 10 new students that came to our school every year, that just wanted to participate in the performing arts piece, that that would pay a bond vote.
When we're in a rehearsal, and we've been working on something, and something just comes together in a way that is really powerful, that they can feel it, I can feel it, there's, there's the sense in the room that something just happened.
Look what they can produce together, and that blended sound is the community of your singers, the community of your instrumentalists in band and orchestra, whatever it is. I want that for all students. That is my goal, is to make sure that there's music in everybody's life, and I think that the kids embrace that.
Even though we're the ones like talking about this right now, and we're, we're here, I guarantee you, if you go and ask anybody else who's part of these programs, whether it's a band or chorus or theater program, they're gonna agree, and they're gonna say that how useful and helpful of a tool the PAC would be.
I've always thought that saying that success breeds success is quite true, because with that, we somehow got a reputation of being a fairly good band.
Okay, moving right along. Ventilation. Right now, the science rooms do not have any ventilation, and we definitely have to do some HVAC work, and same with the library. The library does not have adequate ventilation, and so that's, that's an important piece of this upgrade. And the heating. Right now, we have an oil tank that has gone past its useful life, and rather than replace the oil tank, we've decided we wanna switch to propane, because the boiler has plenty of life left in it, and we figured this is a good time to switch over to the propane, it's cheaper, more efficient, and so we want to take the oil tank out, and that's part of the whole shop expansion too, because right now, that oil tank is in the way of that, so switching over to propane. And the stormwater abatement is something that we have no choice on. This is something the state is requiring. They've been after us for a long time to fix that, so that's going to happen regardless of the result of the bond vote. Have we started that yet? There was talk about starting that-
The drawings are all set and ready to go.
So again, the total cost of this project is $6.8 million. What we're asking for is 3.8. We have some money in our capital reserve fund, and that would cover part of that, and the fundraising that has happened would cover part of it. So 3.8 million from a $6.8 million project is what we are asking for the school bond. And again, the cost to taxpayers, if you have the average $200,000 home, it's going to be less than $50 a year, and, as you can see from there. And the tuition students, again, a very big part of this is that we have become a go-to school. People want their kids to be here. We have the academics, we have the athletics, we have the performing arts, and that's, those are three giant attractions for people from, that have school choice, and every one of those students is $20,000 that we get, which is why we have such a robust capital fund right now, is because we budgeted this year for 45 students, but we ended up with 80. So 35 extra students at $20,000 each, $700,000 that can go into our capital reserve fund. And our taxes, at least our part of it, the school budget, what we've done with taxes this year, Royleton is actually going down, and what, 5%? Is that what it ended up being?
The top of my head, I can't remember.
Yeah, I think it was five.
I think it was 5% lower, and-
Five cents.
Five cents lower.
Yeah, five cents lower, excuse me. And Bethel was slightly higher, about 2%, I mean, 2 cents higher.
2 cents.
Yeah. So, we're doing the best we can to not have huge increases. The state average was 13, I think, with some towns being way above. We, we're in really good shape in our district. And, I can't read this myself right from that far away.
And we can't see it?
Yeah, this one is just saying, "Total bond payments will be less next year than in fiscal year 23. Total bond payments when principal payments start will be less than in fiscal year 21." What's happening here is the gym that a bond was taken out for by Royleton 20 years ago, something like that.
2010.
That bond is going to be paid off in two more years, and so, right now, what we're asking is that we would be paying interest only for, until that bond is paid off, but because Royleton and Bethel merged, Bethel took on paying for that other bond, and everybody's total is going to go down once the gym is paid off. And this timeline is totally off, because we were hoping that this was all going to pass in November, and the fact that we lost by 10 votes in November, and we would've been breaking ground now if that hadn't happened. So, the people from EEI, the contractor we've been working with, he came to our meeting on the 13th, and he felt like we were still not going to be too far off of this timeline. And he also spoke to the cost, 'cause people at the last meeting questioned cost overruns, that, you know, now we've got all of this other stuff happening, and he felt that we were still gonna be able to stay within budget, because they already had built in 5% overage, and he felt like we're still gonna be able to stay on track. And, now the only chance left to vote is tomorrow, from 8 o'clock in the morning till 7 o'clock at night, here if you're a Beth, a Royleton resident, in Bethel at the elementary school, if you are a Bethel resident. So, we're hoping that we have a good turnout. Any questions?
I'm just wondering, if the state does change their mind and decide to build a union school or something somewhere else, what are we gonna do with, with this school or what happens in that case?
Yeah. If, if the governor's plan happened, the five, the five-year, I mean, the five district plan, five supervi, whatever he's calling it, I don't know if he was calling it supervisory unions.
S.D.s.
Yes, supervisory district. If that happened, we're talking a long way out, because in order to have a school in our region that could accommodate that many students, it's-
But we have two schools already, that's really the issue. There's, there's Hartford, and we can talk about all the-
Yeah, Hartford's kinda-
-nasty chemicals, okay? But we don't know that we don't have that here.
We, we've tested, we don't have that.
Oh, so you have had that, so you should've said that.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I've said it in the media several times.
Yeah, we're in good shape.
I haven't seen that, okay. Well, that's good, that's good. There's none of that there, okay.
But even Hartford isn't a large enough school to accommodate the number.
It's large enough to take half, and Randolph.
I, I, my understanding was it would have to be a new school.
Hartford has dangerous chemicals, and Randolph is severely rundown. We're actually probably the nicest school in the area when you look at-
But we wouldn't be able to take some of them.
Well, we would be, if the governor came through-
We could take some of the smaller towns.
We'd be in a position where we'd be trying to maybe save this building as the high school, and there wouldn't be the younger kids here anymore, so then we'd have room for the high school kids.
Okay, so that might be the projected one.
And then Bethel, we would, we would end up losing somewhere possibly if that all came through, but what we'd be doing is trying to save as much school in our immediate area as possible, so that we're still the destination.
Okay, so that wasn't laid, very well laid out.
Plus, nobody has yet to show that the governor's plan saves 5 cents.
Yeah.
All right? The consultant's plan, that the governor's plan that was built on, was done by this Pictus Ogden people. It was presented to the Commission on the Future of Vermont Public Education last September. The state paid 50 grand for it, and if you read the consultant's report, in the report themselves, they say, "Our report is only relevant-" "Our report is only relevant for the largest school districts in Vermont. It is not relevant for 2/3 of this state. We're the most rural state in the nation. 65% of our communities are under 2,500 people." And Jamie, our superintendent, he testified to the Senate Education Committee and basically testified essentially, as I watched it, to that fact, that they haven't put the pencil to this to show that it's economically viable. As a matter of fact, Randolph's tuition rate right now is $27,000. Ours is $20,000. We're, we're running a good school economically. And quite frankly, my observation of participating up in Montpelier, they look at us as a poster child. They want other, other parts of the state to do what we've done. We closed two supervisory unions and formed one. We shut down four high schools and we merged into a middle school and a high school. And our elementary schools are going through the trouble all other elementary schools in the state are doing with, with reduced enrollment, but we've consolidated there. And they've embraced the whole concept of having community-based schools, which is the economical way to do it. Where we are being looked at around the state as what other people should do. I, I don't see any risk of us being closed down, to tell you the truth. I mean, Hartford's got the PCBs. Randolph has structural problems. Woodstock's a water problem away from bringing in temporary classrooms. We're, when I saw that we had no PCBs, I kinda gave it two thumbs up. That's the best news I heard, to tell you the truth. Because we're, we've become the go-to school. And as we do that, I mean, I don't have kids in the school. I don't have grandkids in the school. I'm living on a fixed income. I see this as long-term tax relief, to tell you the truth. Because when, it's not a one-shot pop when a kid comes to school here in 7th grade. They bring $20,000 with them. They stay for 8th grade, it's another 20. They stay for 9th grade. That kid brings us $120,000. Then you don't need too many of them to get into the pipeline to easily pay off this bond issue. I, I see this as a very viable investment in the future for, for our communities, to tell you the truth.
Also, it's, it is in fact probably a gross oversimplification. But if we do this and we have debt and they take everything over, they assume the debt. If we have a capital reserve fund that has $3 million in it and they take over, we hand them $3 million.
So we lose.
So it, it loses. I'm sorry?
Just to define them, the state.
The state. Oh, I'm sorry, the state. So if they do this and we have money, they're going to take our money. If they do this and we have debt, they're going to take our debt. And if they don't do this, we should look at improving our school because we're in for the long haul and we want. So there's almost no lose to a yes vote, in my opinion, because.
Well, I think that's a little misleading because if it did, and not that I think that that's.
Right, right.
That, I was more concerned about the chemicals, which I had not heard, which, that makes me feel much better. But the Articles of Agreement basically stayed. I mean, the, the state owns this because the state is the education system. That, you know, if, if they close it down, send our kids this way, that way, we have this building, they could make this a prison if they wanted to.
Absolutely.
Because they own it.
Absolutely.
So if we bought it back for a dollar, we'd take, we, the citizens of the town of Royalton, would have to pay off the debt. That's factual. That's exactly what the Articles of.
The debt stays with the district.
I just did this in Rochester. We sold the building back to the town for the dollar. That debt doesn't go back to the town. The district still owns that debt, the school district.
That's not what was explained at the time of consolidation at all.
I, well, I understand that, but that's how it works. Yeah, the district holds the debt.
Well, that's even, that's something else than you should.
That's, that's a positive for us in this regard.
Absolutely, absolutely. But it doesn't mean that the state would say, if they want to build a prison here.
The district owns it, exactly. Whatever that new district is, they could decide what they want to do.
Okay, so wherever the district ends up.
And then just, if I may use your example of the prison, let's say it does happen and then we don't get to be the school of choice and this building does become vacant and they build a prison. All these nice folks who are concerned about their taxes, it's now going to be a place where there's no schools. So no, no young families want to move in the prison town versus the good school town. So all these people that are concerned about their real estate values are actually backwards. Because you're going to have a, two towns with a declining age population near a prison in this example, where nobody's moving to them and people are just dying off and nobody's moving to the town and the town's getting, and the property values are going to sink like a stone when the median age of the town suddenly becomes in the 70s and 80s, there's no schools and we have a prison or we have something else. So everybody that thinks that they're, oh, saving tax money, which again, I personally feel is crazy because as a school board, we continually save tax money year after year. I think they honestly have it backwards. And I think that when we ask for a yes vote, we're actually doing what's right for the students. I think we're doing what's right for the taxpayer. And I think that there's been a communication breakdown and that people aren't actually going to get what they want if they keep voting no. They're going to end up getting shot in the foot, long-term. I, whereas the other options, it seems like we almost can't lose. If we fix our school and they don't take it, we have a nicer school that has some very distinct needs. If we fix the school and they take it, we will probably become either the destination for high school students or the destination for a whole bunch of elementary school students. And then people will still move to this town and will have a viable community. If we become the destination and they take it and more tuition students come, it will actually bring money to downtown Royalton, to the village, because people will be coming from other towns to pick up their kids. They'll be staying when it's time for old home days. They'll be going to RB's Delicatessen, more stopping at the store here. So I honestly, I feel very passionately that the people that are saying no have it backwards. Sorry. Thank you for letting me use your example though, of the prison. Because it was the perfect, I've been waiting for that perfect example.
Well, it, it could, that's the worst-case scenario.
Yeah.
I, I cannot believe that the governor's plan anyways is going to go through.
No, no.
And even with the one that the House passed, House 454 bill, that involved, we'd be busing kids for three hours a day? Is that correct?
Well, it depends. I mean.
Yeah.
Worst case.
Yeah, worst-case scenario, we'd have five-year-olds, kindergarten kids, being bused an hour and a half each way. If they closed down all of the elementary schools in the district and everybody had to come to one. I think that, I think those of us that are in the rural areas and, like was said, 65% of our students live in what is classified as rural. And I think if the, the townspeople in those towns get on board and get to their representatives and say, "We can't do this. We can't, we cannot have kids being bused three hours a day, especially five-year-olds."
Well, there's a very well-organized group making that point. That's the Rural Small Community Alliance. And which, I, I believe Royalton and Bethel are parts of it. I think.
Every district.
I think there are 80, 80 towns are now part of that. And that's the point they're making. I mean, it's, this, the governor's plan, this isn't, this isn't homegrown. This didn't come from Vermont. This is, there's a bigger, there's a bigger issues at play right here.
Okay. If there aren't any more questions, we can do our little tour now. Anybody have anything?
So the, the 80 students that come in as a tuition, what's the guarantee that we're gonna stay that way? For, for, to have 80 kids per year come in?
Well, that's why we don't, we do not budget for 80.
Okay.
Yeah. We budgeted for 45. We were very conservative about it. Because, yeah, we do not want to base our revenue on a wild guess.
That is through this July 1st, right?
Yes.
And what's the projection for next?
Do we have one?
The projection is solid. Right there. Not that we're gonna grow by another 10 necessary.
Yeah.
But that we'll hold right around.
We haven't seen any influx of new folks or.
Well, we're, I mean, we're great gaining another, how many from Rochester, Stockbridge?
We have four that have already registered, two likely to.
Yeah, so four to six there that will be new. And another like six coming to us from first branches, I've been told.
Yeah.
So there's an influx of 12 more, but we're gonna graduate around 12, right?
Right.
So that's why I say I think we're gonna hold steady. But the most important part of it is that when we go to budget, we'll budget conservatively so that we have more than we intended. That's probably the most important part of the process, is not to overshoot.
Part of how we got into one of those.
Yeah.
Some of our deficit spending six years ago, seven years ago, was our overstatement of revenue coming in via tuition. And that's part of why we had those, those deficits that we had to clean up five years ago.
Any other questions?
I would just say that we have an Art and Soul concert once a year here in the high school that brings in all the little kids from all the surrounding elementaries. And so they get comfortable, they come here and their parents see it here. And I think that what we see is kids coming from these towns outside of Rudd. Because they come, they feel what it feels like to play in a big place with lots of other kids, which they don't have that in their small schools, right? So I just, I just want to add that like, I think our Art and Soul concert once a year has made more of this draw. And I think if we did follow up with like putting more money to our, our practice program places and we're not hurting kids' hearing, that, that would, it would just perpetuate this more. I do think there's kids that come here because they don't get maybe the, the band stuff that they get here, which is, is a lot really. They get lots of practice with instruments and with a lot of other kids. Whereas if you're in Rochester, Stockbridge, you might be like one flute player playing with just the band teacher. So anyways, I do think that's helped a lot.
And, yeah, something that you made me think of, the practice space that we have now, that'll become the elementary music room. And, which is going to make a huge difference because right now, the music teachers have their stuff on a cart that they take around to classrooms, which means that the teacher who is being relieved of duty for that class period cannot stay in their room because now there's a music class in the room, which makes it hard. And the music teacher having to bring everything around on a cart. Obviously, you're not gonna bring a piano from room to room on a cart. So that practice space will now be used for the elementary music program. And some of the practice rooms down there will be used for office space for special ed.
Interventionists, yes.
Yeah, interventionists. And so that, that space is still going to be well-used.
One other thing I would just say, and, and Eunice was on the board for a long time and thanks for your service, Eunice. I would say, one of the things that I have seen as a real change in this supervisory union as well is that the districts that make up the supervisory union are really emphasizing and prioritizing students considering our high school and our middle school, which has been a fundamental change. Like in their strategic plan and goal for them is to increase enrollment at our middle high school. And so there's a real partnership and wanting to work together with this understanding, like when we have a strong middle high school within our SU boundaries, that it's better for all of our towns, right? Because when we work together, there's incurred savings that happens there. And so that's, that's been a real positive change over the last five years. Which I also think is part of why we've seen enrollment go up. I think our, our, our product has certainly improved. But in addition to that, I think this whole idea of boards signaling to their principals of this idea of like, we need to make certain we're giving White River Unified District a fair shot. I think there was a time within this SU that this, our district was not given a fair shot. That has totally changed in that regard.
Plus the fact that we are less expensive than surrounding ones. So, you know, $27,000 to tuition kids to Randolph. I don't know what, what stock is at now. Was it 22 or 23, I think?
23.
We're, we're the, the lowest tuition choice around. Yes?
How much is Sharon Academy?
Sharon Academy, I'm gonna say off the top of her head. Sharon Academy now is like, it's either 22 or 23.
Not the one in Crete.
Are you talking about?
They don't have a high school or a best school. Oh, they do not?
They would, they would announce at the state average, which is right around us. I think the state average is like 19.6 or 19.9.
Are any of their schools growing?
Sharon Academy is not growing.
They put addition on it. Why would they do that?
What's that?
So they put an addition on, what would they do if they aren't growing?
You'd have to ask their board. I can't speak to that, but I'm just telling you their enrollment's down.
They had a yurt and they, they wanted to get rid of the yurt and that, that was my understanding. I have a friend that teaches there.
The state gave them a half a million dollars for that.
Yeah, the state gave them a half a million dollars for some reason, when they weren't willing to give any other public school in the area.
No money for public schools, but a half a million dollars.
Yeah, they gave them a half a million dollars to do that. And as far as I know, it was to.
There's a whole story here.
Yeah.
I just, I know their enrollment's down.
And they don't have a music program. That's, this is really a big draw here. You know, the fact that Ellis Music is here and has been so generous and providing instruments. It's just incredible, the music program we've got here.
Well, and we've got a great program. So now it's having the building, the space, the facility to actually utilize it to, to the fullest extent. I mean, our band director, I just talked to him on Friday and he moved here and said like, wow, this is tiny. I mean, he's happy to have the job. He loves it. He's excited to be here. But he said, "This is tiny." Like, we got, all his kids are in this tiny little spot. That was his immediate reaction. And, and when we're trying to attract and retain staff, you know, teachers and quality teachers, something like that really comes into effect. And as a person who, my wife grew up here, looking at moving back, if we already had kids, I mean, my kids are in elementary school here now, if they were already in band and there wasn't a good facility and there wasn't a good program, we may not have decided to move here. Because we had other options. And that's what we need. We need people that want to move here. People go to performances. Their cousin is thinking about moving here and they say, "Oh, I don't know." The band program is kind of, no, we want them to say, "It's amazing. Your kid's gonna be able to play tuba here."
I have a grandson that was considering Sharon Academy and, when he was in 7th grade. And when he learned that they do not have a music program, he was like, "Nope, that's it." That's all it took for him to say, "No, I'm not going there." Okay, so shall we do our tour? Jeff, do you want to lead us? Because I get lost every time I try to find my way around this building.
Am I following you?
Um, does, Jamie, does, does Orca need to be with us?
What's that?
Does Orca need to follow us?
That's up to them.
All right.
We're going on a tour. You haven't had the tour yet. Yeah.
I have now. I need a minute to get together. Apparently we're on. Yes, he's in.
Yeah, I almost wore my babe's sweatshirt. I had it on all day and then I thought, oh, maybe I shouldn't be wearing babe's bar.
It's an asset.
Yes.
All right.
So what do you think? I got reconciled.
He's already like here at school with the senior coordinator.
He's smoking over there again, right?
No, actually.
Oh, you sure.
You only get caught once.
Yeah. Usually. I hesitate.
I love the smell of wood.
I do. I really do, yeah. That's supposed to be a gun cabinet, one of our students is still working on. So some of the bigger projects are already out because it's kind of the end of the year. But, and, and you can see the storage is kind of a difficult problem here as well. But, um, so this is woodworking area here and then the automotive that's over there, welding machines. And so it's kind of tight when you got a lot of kids in here. You can basically park one car in at a time.
Which is usually yours.
Yeah, usually mine because. Yeah, usually mine because you know, you get parked up there at the auto parks.
And it's small.
But in other news, the car buffing program is going great here.
And so then we have small engines too. Like we'll have, I don't know, three or four tractors that we're working on. Actually, Mr. Canardi just brought his down, left it out here. And so, and that's the problem when we're working outside and that window to the lab is right above and the science, the smoke and everything travels up or gas or whatever. So having this area enclosed out behind these would just give us that opportunity to, you know, not smell and a little quieter and so forth. So again, like as you, you look around though, it's like some of the machines aren't in here right now, but you put one car over there. Right now, we're doing some welding on that, so we can't even offer a car in here and do that. So one of the things I talk about too is like, you know, why don't we send the kids to Randolph, you know, to vocation? And that's really good, and I was a vocation kid myself and I loved that. But it really cost us more money than the kid brings in. So if a kid comes to our school and we get the, you know, twenty thousand, we send them off to Randolph and we're paying that vocational fee, which is more than the tuition he paid to come. We, we're going to support every student, but if we could do that in-house, it would save us a lot of money. And again, another problem is Randolph and Hartford often won't take kids until they're juniors. So you have kids that are vocational hands-on workers that don't, they can't sign up for shop because it's full already. So that, I think that takes away from a lot of kids and then we have some problems with some of these students because they're not engaged because they don't, they're not able to work in the shop, so, yeah. Any questions about the shop?
Definitely needs an expansion.
How many students are in shop? Like we have about eight kids per class, there's probably sixty kids that take shop right now. It'd be nice to have more, but again, I think the room is, is not enough room.
Eight students per?
Eight to twelve sometimes. The problem is, is they'll be doing woodworking here and kids will be welding there. And we just run out of room, especially on some of the bigger projects. And you can see some of the desks and stuff that kids are working on and the gun cabinet. I think one student, a shelf there, there's a desk here, yeah. Some of these projects are pretty big for the size of space.
Something to keep in mind, every student in the middle school takes shop. We've only seen more and more interest. We have some students that have asked to double up, taking their flexible pathways in their shop. We're going to be sending to the high school next year, students who have built boats, used laser engravers, looms, built fires with friction starters, everything from the most primitive to the most advanced technology. This, these communities added a lot in the middle school in terms of the maker space. Will Brooks, the person who is the current shop teacher, built our program, so we have a phenomenal program. And we keep investing in that. The latest upgrade is finishing the dust collection. Long story short is, we're seeing more and more interest, more students are taking it through flexible pathways. We're sending more and more students to the high school that are saying, hey, I'd love to learn how to weld, I'd love to fabricate, I'd love to tear an engine apart, I'd love to do some more of the fine woodworking that Mr. Brooks started us on. If you walk through our schools, there's nothing but projects around that students are working on. I don't think it's underselling it to say we're, more and more students are choosing this path. On a point made earlier, we want that student to both excel in math and also want to get their hands on a project. We want to have that well-rounded student that is choosing to stay with us as opposed to going to a tech center. We want that well-rounded student.
Well, even worse, better, if you get them excited about shop or something or maker space and then they can't go to Randolph till junior year and they can't be serviced properly here.
Right.
That kid is going to be disillusioned for two years if he truly, he or she.
Yeah.
Truly wants to be a hands-on student.
Sometimes we actually, they drop out before then, unfortunately, we just can't service that, yeah.
How far out into this parking lot will that go?
It's going to be about, you remember the.
Thousand square feet.
So it'll be.
It'll be tight against this?
Yeah, yeah, these doors will leave obviously.
Yeah.
I think where that brick is right there to the end of that maybe, maybe not quite that far, maybe. But it's about, about the same distance from that to that wall right there, I mean, two more of those. So that's going to give you, you've got two cars you can work on, you can do welding over there, you know, and then you, this could be all woodworking. I mean, you could kind of plan it out like that.
So this movement, are you going to pave this?
Yeah, I would, yeah, yeah. Part of the deal.
Overall, are you using this space?
This space, probably close to sixty, probably. But we could use a lot more. Last year, we welded half-time for us and half-time year at the school. It's just, we had hundreds of kids wanting to be in here, classes. At least now it's full-time.
So are all of these, these kids in here, well, is there a fair amount that want to, they're studying regular classes like?
Yeah, they're in biology, math, science.
But they want to, they want to be well-rounded.
Right, right. Some kids are taking a math class down here and all about measuring and building and stuff, which is math.
Yeah. I'm in the construction business and there's lots of people don't know how to read tape.
Yeah, exactly, so that's their math. All right, so we'll, we'll head to the band room. Now, Gregory Ninety-Two is down here. The last person to be enlisted in the musical.
That's his vision of it.
Well, this looks a little different since the flood.
No, I know, really.
But we were trying to get all the stuff up.
Right.
You know, they were shelves, but.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So our band room, so as you can tell, I mean, it looks like there's a little bit of space in here, but then when you get sixty kids all in those chairs and music and stuff, it's, it's packed.
Or even when you get the town band in here. I'm in here every Thursday night.
How many are in the town band?
I haven't counted them all up, but we have three rows, plus we're crawling, in the percussion section, we're crawling over things in back to get our instruments.
Yeah, I mean, safety wise, it's pretty crazy. I mean, I stand there to watch class sometimes and I have to plug my ears, it's really, really loud. And so all the chairs are here, they have chorus, seventh period, and then eighth period is band. So chorus leaves, band members come in, they're pretty good now, it's like clockwork. They grab the chairs and set the chairs up, then they're, they're practicing. And that's the worst part of the whole thing is when they're practicing and warming up, it's just like so much noise going on. So, so the biggest thing though is when there is a concert in the gym, all this equipment, all their instruments have to go out this door, up those stairs, down the hall and into the gym. And I mean, I, I don't know, one of the. Yeah, all those fell apart one time, they were, ah, so it's quite a bit of work. And not that.
There was some kind of lift though, right?
There's an elevator, but that's so small.
Do they carry those drums up the stairs?
Yeah.
Yeah, see, and I've always said, as, as a dad, if I found out that Maddie played that drum and she was.
Oh, yeah.
I'd be, I'd be furious that you were.
One lawsuit from some kid going up the stairs and balling would pay for the whole performing arts center.
Yes, it would.
It smells good in here, don't it?
When you come in here, these kids are like, their armpits are, oh my gosh, it smells pretty bad.
And I was unaware of the decibel level as well. My daughter's in theater, but not in band. If I had known about that, I would have had an issue with her playing in band and I would have been talking to somebody if I knew that the hearing was that bad. Until this project came out, I didn't know that it was that loud in here.
Yeah. Well, one of the other things that we didn't mention is like when we do our drama performances, we, we have all the elementary schools come to them and watch. And the beginning of our live dress rehearsal for our kids, but, and so that they leave all excited and stuff. So we're really promoting our arts here at our school. So I think that's kind of important, the more we can get our, you know, other students in here. And I always say you build it and they will come. And I think that was kind of true with our gymnasium, right? Took years and years and we finally got that gym and all of a sudden, we got a couple of kids that came from Thupford and I think they wanted to be part of our basketball team more than our math classes and so forth, but we got them here, right? And so that's just that tuition, so. We do a really good job, we do our Wildcat Night, so we invite all the school districts to come. And we showcase, all of our teachers will be in the gym showcasing all the academics that they do. We have the Booster Club there, we have the Arts and Drama there, we have tours and stuff. So we really promote our school. And you know, we work, we give swag out to everyone, we want everyone obviously wearing our school colors and promoting who we are. Because this is really a special town and a special school, so.
So to back up just a little, so that a hundred and ten decibels is a little bit less than a jackhammer with concrete. It's about a hundred and twenty-five.
Wow.
So think about that for an hour, what, forty minutes during the band?
I think the Who hold the record at a hundred and twenty-six decibels for a concert.
There we go.
One of the deep purple buds. Quite honestly, our band room is larger in the middle school, but we're still victims of the same success. It is loud, there are a lot of students and all of those students are feeding into this beautiful program here. And that room is at least half again as big as this one. And also set up with risers built into the floors, right? So it lays out like a band room. If you notice in that video, Mr. Polly was conducting from quite literally right here.
Yeah, the chairs are right up there, yeah. Do you want to see the entrance?
Yeah, let's look at the entrance, too.
And this is where we walk, they'll, they would walk with all this equipment to bring it to the small gym.
Must have a lot of cats.
Yeah, I help kids bring in equipment up and down these stairs.
Well, that's part of your video.
I know, that big old drum, I mean, it's, it's pretty tough to carry that.
It doesn't look that strong.
One of the things I wanted to do is on these tours, is have everyone bring some instruments up all the way down. Because then that boat would pass, they're like, no way, my.
Do you have one of those?
Yeah, the A D machine.
Give the chance to do that too. Now we need a nursing.
Yeah, that's right, yeah.
Absolutely, yes.
So this is our high school entrance. Again, the parking lot's right there for our high school students who come across the bridge in the morning. Kids let people in and they come in through this way. The main entrance is obviously the front, but our elementary goes through there. There's not much parking there. So just the other day, I was down here and there was a FedEx guy here. I said, how'd you get in here, what are you doing here? He goes, oh, the door was on, uh, prompt open, so I came in. I'm like, like, I just freaked out. I was like, you're supposed to go around the front. I said, you need to go around the front. And he just gave me the box and left, but it was like, kind of weird, right? So some people talk about safety, I know there's an article in the newspaper recently and Brian Simone, who is a student I taught, talked about, it's not really the doors that are, make it safe and stuff. This people, this research he's done said it's inside and whatnot.
And that's one of my things is, that question that I have for you guys, because there'll be technology involved in some of this.
Yeah.
How are you going to stop everybody from just pressing all the buttons and leaving the door cranked open?
Right. Currently, we have badges to open this one, but there's a second door. And I think more and more schools, safety-wise, have that second door entrance. So you get buzzed in, you can come in and then you have to go through another section of doors to get into the school. And right now with one door, that's not really the case.
So you're going to push out here, is that?
There's going to, yes, yeah, it's going to go further out, so we'll be a two-door entrance.
And this is the lobby for people coming to plays and stuff, I mean, there's.
And elementary basketball plays in there and same thing, there's a line out the door with two teams playing and stuff. It's just kind, and again, it's like, I don't know, I have a lot of pride in our school and our kids, seniors will always tell me, geez, Miss Thomas, it feels like we're coming in the back door and they're like, it's like an old, you know, we don't feel well-respected with that. And it's not real safe because kids literally open this door all day long and you go out in the parking lot and they'll just come in back and forth, so.
Is that they want to be a monitoring, like they'll be able to see as well from the front? So they'll be able to buzz them in by looking through the camera system and seeing who is there.
Exactly, yeah, yeah. So and then this will be an area here, the hallway that will go into the Performing Arts Center. It goes down and into the back of the Performing Arts Center. So you don't have to go across the gym when there's class going on and so forth, so.
So this is the main entrance where the high school comes in?
Yeah.
I thought it was like, would drop my daughter off here, I thought it was the back door.
Yeah, I know, really is.
And that's what I had, I was supposed to go in.
I never know which door to go in.
And so we are like.
On signage would help.
Yeah, yeah, that's true. We did apply for a COPS grant for this safety entrance, we didn't get it. But it's something that we feel is really important as a school.
I think Jamie said that we could reapply after the fact for that.
Yeah.
So we still might get money for that after the fact, the COPS grant. Because if it's a safety issue, they may give us money. We just have to keep trying.
So this is where they have to bring all the equipment up and into this small gym, so. One of our board members mentioned that we should all carry the drum up or something and see how long of a distance it is to carry that equipment. And it was bad enough just walking.
You made the joke, Jeff, you made the joke, I didn't.
Okay.
One lawsuit will pay for the, for the performing arts, because if my daughter fell down those stairs carrying a kettle drum.
Any other questions or comments?
Looking at prom pictures.
Oh, yeah.
Where was the prom?
It was up in Brookfield.
Yeah, somebody's.
Somewhere.
Yeah. Up at my ex-husband's.
Oh.
And the closer you got to Brookfield, the less it rained. It's amazing, lightning strikes down here and you went up and it stopped raining for the prom.
The kids, the kids truly did have a charm, didn't they?
They did, they did, it was absolutely amazing.
So is the small gym, there's, there's going to be stuff happening here.
Well, yeah, so less than original, but yeah, but really the, the bondo isn't paying for any of this. It's kind of on the other side where it's going to be the addition, so from that wall over.
That wall over, okay, this will stay like this?
They're going to do some.
The Booster Club is raising money, planning to do things to stay strictly. And maybe like some staging here, so.
Okay.
Because you know when you come and you're sitting down, you can't see, and if you're in the back, it's really hard?
Yeah, forget that.
They want to do something seating as well, but that's something that the bondo is up for.
And then honestly, I'm not going to say legally, probably morally, we should at some point make sure that a child with a wheelchair can get on stage.
Well, I think that's part of it, that is part of it now.
Overdue for that, I honestly believe that like.
There's an elevator that will bring up equipment, like a piano or whatever on stage that you can't just lift every time. And then that will also be accessible.
Was never an elevator over there?
That's why I said, it's, it's kind of like when they said that in the plans and they were doing it, I said, we don't already have a solution for. And I said, that's not right.
And every year for those performances, we have to rent lights. I forgot how much that costs. It's not cheap, so. Four thousand dollars for like a performance, that's quite a bit of money each time. So I think that part of the boosters is to raise money too for the lighting, but that would be something that we have.
They are successful too, aren't they?
They get their money. Yeah.
And they have more pledged, there's, there are some of the donors that Jack. There's, there are some of the donors, uh, the Jeff and Dorothy Burns Foundation provided the five hundred thousand, but there are others who, Ellis Music being one of them, that have held off. They, they wanted to see the vote pass.
Yes, it passes, yeah.
And then they're going to be making donations also.
We can't say...
We're not, I was gonna say, we're not, we're not allowed to say it's gonna happen, but Ellis Music is gonna be very happy if...
That should be noted, should it all happen?
Ellis, Ellis is going to be very happy.
I hope so, soon we have. Back on shelter.
Hey, I saw you one night, did you see your hat? Cameras for the ball, the entire... You know, I have to ask you, if they tell you to put your phone up to your ears and...
No, back, were you early on the call?
I was literally on the call. I was like, did they say, let's get a, let's get a gradual shot?
Yes, yes.
Yep. Jeff, your, uh, your tip about the bridge shopping.
Yeah.
I tried to take it.
Yeah.
And it's good for ties. I buy plenty of ties. Nothing else, because they don't sell fat kid clothing. I'm down the license center, I'm like, nope, this stuff's a one X. I asked Maddie, I asked Maddie, I said, what's the deal? She goes, people just don't get rid of fat people. It's so hard to get a shirt that fits or something. She goes, I'm gonna take them. And I went, oh, good. And she's like, think about it, you have to buy big and tall and they don't get rid of them. I'm like, no. So, no.
Joking.
But when I was in there, I was looking at the ties and I said, trying to take Jeff's advice, doing anything I can buy.
None of these pants are...
I like this shirt.
I was, uh, I was actually getting blunder.
Oh, yeah, yeah, nice.
Because, uh, I haven't seen you. I showed Pierre, because he came in that day with Jamie. I'm making paper, like craft paper. So I need something to pulp the paper, so that's why I bought a used blender there.
Oh, wow. You got it all fixed. Nice job. Little scavenger hut doesn't hurt. Hi, Julie. I'm sorry, I should have told you, we were gonna have a forum. You didn't need to hang out, but... I wasn't positive that everybody was gonna be here, but Jamie left and... But we still had Dave, Peggy and me.
Should I still be recording?
Um, we're gonna adjourn.
Okay. Yeah, enough people do that. We still got David and Peggy.
Yeah, yeah, we're fine. Okay, guys, if there are no other comments or questions, I'm going to entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Do we have a second? S, S?
Second.
Okay, Dave, thank you. Okay, um... Good night, thank you for coming out.